International cooperation and opportunities would request everyone to please settle down.
Introduce this section 43F of IT Act, which first time brought the privacy rule. They talk about there will be rules that government will notify under the section 43 Act. And I think after that got passed in 2008, I know it's knowing for a day. So we took three years to define that first set of privacy rules, right? So 2011 was the year where the rule came, right? But that was the first kind of a content. So if you look at the privacy regime in the country, there are two primary things, right? One is the content, which talks about the kind of obligation and expectation that you set with the content. Another part is the enforcement mechanism. So 2011, that privacy rule on the 2011, which was notified. So that brought first, first of its kind of a content for privacy in the country. And it also set up some level of enforcement mechanism. So there was every IT secretary of every state would be an auditing officer. And I've seen a lot of cases that they saw the IT secretary has rule on privacy. And I think that time also, 2009, we started talking to European Commission. Aducais is one of the key requirement there. We started looking at what kind of content can be looked at from the adequacy expectation perspective. Since 2008 to 2015, 16, 17, 18, there are two assessment which happened. So adequacy assessment of India, which European Commission has done with the consultant, which they deployed to do this adequacy assessment. And it did do quite a thorough job of assessing India's privacy regime from the various perspective that Europe talked about basically, right? And looks at even constitution guarantee, the rights that can be guaranteed by the constitution. And it also talk about the different content expectation, looks at the horizontal ambiguity. And that was the adequacy assessment is kind of a mechanism to establish some kind of a golden rule all across globe. And that could be way that European Commission were looking at to see the world's entire privacy, kind of culture or posture improves with that basically. And similarly, that time I remember 2011, we had gone to US Dr. Pajat Dattam CUDSI. We had visited Department of Commerce and we started looking at this affect privacy framework. And what can we do? How can we look at this privacy scene? And a lot of exchanges happened, but by that time, I think India not being part of affect was one of the reason where those discussions didn't pursue ahead basically. So at this point of time, there are two global ecosystem, as we can say, which either facilitate, regulate or govern the data transfer. One is adequacy, another is certainly the CBPR, so cross-border privacy tool. And that ecosystem does talk about how exactly the privacy regime it looks at, what kind of enforcement mechanism that country may have and what kind of management that we can look at basically. But is it something like we had seen until now adequacy? This is one question basically. Second part is like the conversation that initially we had is what's meant for affect country. And how can, if it is possible or anything as India as a country to be part of this ecosystem? So how exactly country like India or any other non-affect country can be part of this second part? Third part is like, what are those benefits? There are some countries which are part of already CBPR country basically, are part of the CBPR forum basically. So how they are getting benefit out of it basically? And the industry that we have, the big IT service industry plus a lot of global industry which is coming and setting their operation here. But more importantly, the small and medium scale organization which are now looking at exporting basically is how that will benefit. So if we can have your initial remark on talking about global CBPR, CBPR, the history of CBPR and global CBPR. So that initial remark, we will talk to, because it's a closer interaction that we have. And there are people on virtual link as well. So we'd like to have you, Shana, to do that initial remark. But for all of your information, she looks at that global privacy initiative of Department of Commerce. It happened to be representing NASCOM on the ACI in the global CBPR forum meeting which happened in San Diego. And I've seen not only India, but I've seen dependence even from the Bangladesh, Nepal, Maldives, Qatar, Saudi Arabia. So a lot of non-affect countries, they are trying to examine exploring new relating being part of this system basically. So it seems a significant part of the geography is low business now looking at this as a way to be part of that global, because one of the key part that we say is 2017, in the India's economy, so the contribution of trade, digital trade was almost 17 to 18 billion dollar. Now it is supposed to be reaching to 500 billion dollars. The trade which happened digital form, because digital economy is all across in G20 interaction. We talk about the digitization economy and then also engaging global geographies on the digital agenda. In the itself has a lot of ambitions with this to TPI to take our story to other worlds basically. So how from that context perspective it works? We can have you deliberate and go through this global CBPR ecosystem. And then we'll take questions from the audiences here.
Hello, all right. Thank you so much for inviting me here to be with me today and to talk about the global CDR forum. Quick introduction, myself as Max and I'm Global Director of Data Policy in US Department of Commerce.
Is it working?
Can you hear me? Oh, sorry. Okay. Where I lead on behalf of the US government are engagement in the global CDR forum. I'm also the first chair of the newly established global forum. It was established in 2022. And essentially in my role, I work on data policy issues as they impact cross-border data flows that underpin commerce. So this is why the Department of Commerce, we talk about data privacy. It's funny because I've been in school now for eight years. And throughout that entire time, a lot, a vast majority of my work has been focused on data privacy. Of course, we know there's all sorts of issues related to data and impact cross-border data flows. But data privacy has been and continues to be the prominent issue impacting cross-border data flows in business work in this area. So we're on time. So happy to be here today to talk about our work on that. So I'm sure that everyone in this room is aware of the value of data for innovating, for reaching business partners, consumers. And I know also, I'm sure that all of you are aware of the increasingly complex global regulatory environment around data. In the past few years, there's been an explosion of countries adopting new data privacy protection laws, including obviously here in India earlier this year. And most countries now have data protection laws. So this while is a great thing for protecting personal data. It also has become massively complicated and complex for companies that operate in multiple markets. And what's difficult for big companies is in certain senses nearly impossible for small companies. I think also there is a growing awareness among companies that there is a need for businesses that they do business with to be accountable for data practices. And being able to demonstrate as a company accountability for data handling practices can set you apart. You know, competitively can build trust when they're working with other business partners and also with customers. So the US believes that governments have a role to play in this space and to help businesses meet these challenges. So one of the ways the United States does this is through the promotion of the CBPR forum that I'm happy to be here today to talk about. And I mentioned this is newly created forum, it was established in 2022. And it seeks to promote cooperation among governments on cross-border data privacy and protection. And also to provide tools for businesses to comply with those requirements. One of the primary objectives of the global forum is to create a multilateral data privacy certifications. So with this certification, companies will be able to obtain a certification within their domestic market, your local market, if your government is a member of the forum. And that certification would then be recognized in other countries that are participating in the forum. The global certification that we are developing in the global forum is based on an existing multilateral data privacy certification that was established in Apex. As I mentioned earlier, this work started initially with an Apex. And the nine Apex members that establish a CBPR system actually, we as a group created the global forum. So just to be clear about who those members are, in addition to the United States, we have Australia, Canada, Japan, oh, that's better. Sorry if I wasn't being loud enough before. Australia, Canada, Japan, Korea, Mexico, Philippines, Singapore and Chinese Taipei. So all nine of us are part of this forum. Also, we are very pleased to have our first new member, the United Kingdom, joined as an associate member earlier this year. So the more jurisdictions that participate in the global forum, the more valuable a global CDR certification will be for companies. So as a forum, we are actively engaged in promoting participation in the forum to governments around the world. And actually, and I had mentioned our recent workshop that we had in San Diego, California. And we had two dozen governments represented there from Latin America, Europe, Asia, Africa, the Middle East, all regions. And what we're seeing from those engagements is not only a growing awareness that there is a need for global cooperation, but really, I think, a desire to want to promote cooperation, including core companies that are doing businesses across all of our jurisdictions. So a fully realized global CBPR certification for companies will simplify your compliance with privacy requirements across jurisdictions. The idea is that through one touch point, you would certify and then all of your global operations would be covered. It builds trust amongst participants. So of course, I mentioned already with companies, you know, if a company that you're working with is certified, what do those standards they're certified are, that they've been verified by a third party. But then also amongst governments, that governments are cooperating. We understand what our commonalities are in the privacy space. We know what that means. We know where the differences are. And that's really important. And then finally, the regulatory benefits that not only for regulators, of course, but then also the idea being that regulators can recognize a CBPR certification for certain benefits under their law. For example, both Singapore and Japan recognize CBPR certification for making cross-border transfers under their domestic requirements. So another benefit that we've seen so far is that the CBPR system can be used as a tool for ensuring trusted data flows are integral part of strong data protection and privacy system. This is really sort of where the trade angle comes in and where we've seen this workout. The US, Canada, Mexico free trading agreement, for example, recognize a CBPR system as a valid mechanism for facilitating cross-border data flows. So really the possibilities or benefits for all of the stakeholders in the system, from companies, from governments, from regulators, are, there's really so many benefits there. And I think, you know, we're excited to be here today to engage with local industry and also government officials to encourage participation in the forum. One thing I do want to highlight is the forum does actively encourage stakeholder participation. It's not a bunch of government officials going into a room and coming out with a fait accompli and saying, this is what you have to do. No. We invite industry, we invite other stakeholders to come in and be a part of the discussion. In fact, that's one of the main benefits of having these regular engagements, these workshops, where we can hear from industry, what is it, you know, are we focusing on the right things? Are we crafting these requirements in a way that makes sense from a real practical perspective? So I think for Indian companies, to be able to get in the room with government officials or regulators and to be a part of the conversation would be beneficial for forum activities, but also for industry. And I would say from a government perspective, having two, you know, the United States and India leaders in the digital space and the tech space sort of leading on the global discussion on these issues, which have been, the data privacy discussions have been growing on for years, but they have really ramped up. And we still haven't solved that coordination piece, but we think we can do it. We think we can in a multilateral forum on the basis of cooperation and flexibility, converging around commonalities rather than trying to impose one standard on everybody. And we think there's a real benefit to having the government of India, Indian industry to join part of that conversation. So that's just my quick introduction, or I hope it was quick, to the work that we're doing. But happy to take questions.
Yeah, so this mechanism is a government mechanism. So government has to make an application for this.
So that's right. So to be a member of the forum, membership is among governments. And the reason for that is, is because sort of the basis of mutual recognition among participating jurisdictions is that we all understand and agree that the certification is enforceable in every jurisdiction. So a company that is certified in the United States meets the same requirements as a company that's certified in Japan and Korea and Singapore and has the same, or I'm gonna say it this way. Those obligations are legally enforceable against a US company. In our case, by the US Federal Trade Commission, as are the obligations for a certified company in any of those other jurisdictions. So as a part of that process, a government has to demonstrate that those requirements are legally enforceable. And then that's the basis of trust for building that multilateral certification. Also, I should say, so if the governments join the forum, we also have a mechanism that's part of membership that requires the regulators from each of the jurisdictions to join this enforcement cooperation agreement, which is another important element. It's a voluntary mechanism for cross-border cooperation. Those are sort of the key aspects that the government officials participate in. And then it's the companies then that obtain the certification. So that's how that works.
So one or two more question and we'll open it to all the leaders right here. So when a government mechanism, then as we experienced in case of the European Union, content becomes important, right? What kind of content that you put together for a privacy law? And so is the way you do enforcement. So there is very thorough process that you talk about in terms of assessing each and every small part of the content. And also look at the very small part of the enforcement mechanism as well. So would this mechanism also do assessment of the data protection regulation that has been passed here on the enforcement?
So I do want to be clear from the outset to say, this is not an adequacy assessment. You mentioned sort of that as a comparison. What, how we do this in the forum is that we have a set of what they call program requirements that make up a certification. And there are 50 program requirements that map to the nine privacy principles, notice, choice, security, et cetera. All those things that are very familiar. And they're the same for a certification issued in any country. Doesn't matter. It's one set. And each country that wants to participate in certification has to map how their laws meet, basically make those requirements enforceable. It is agnostic on how it is done. So this is a really important point because this flexibility is what we need is makes this mechanism scalable. The United States doesn't have a comprehensive privacy law. Well, how are we participating in the global forum? Because we have a consumer protection law that makes, that is enforced by the US Federal Trade Commission, that makes the certification enforceable against companies. So when the United States went to join, we said, we mapped the requirements, we said, basically, all of these are enforceable. The other members said?
Took my ear.
Oh, sorry. All the other members agreed and we were able to participate. The other participating countries had their own laws and they basically said, we can enforce this requirement under this law. Everybody else has a comprehensive privacy law. But nonetheless, you see, it is not a judgment of a local law as such. It is a demonstrating how our domestic law makes the certification requirements that we all agree in our common law was enforceable. And so that's how that process works.
This is largely to maximize some mapping exercises and assessment.
That's right. That's right. And importantly, it doesn't impact a domestic law. You're, you still have obligations to comply with, say, for example, in case, maybe you have obligations to comply with your domestic law. It doesn't override that. I know that's a very important. So our laws among the members, there are differences. That's not prohibitive for us to participate in this certification scheme, which basically reflects the commonalities among all of our jurisdictions. So it gives you, you know, that sort of broad commonalities that among all the members.
Yeah, so hopefully this would have given overall larger understanding about this global CDR. So would like to now, I think we go to Swati first and then we'll come here. So can you get the mic here?
Hi, I'm Swati Raghacharya. I represent United Health Group and Morton, which is a company of Uchi. So this is very welcoming actually to see something like this. To, you know, during the G20 and the B20, there was a very strong conversation amongst the industry that we need to have some level of commonality amongst, you know, the rules, the regulations in a way that both for India and other countries, right? There can be comfortable, you know, standards of data and therefore digital trust. And this seems to be a welcome change. A question though is that, A, is this similar to like a standards organization, you know, where, you know, countries have, or rather companies or members have an equalcy in terms of, you know, how we should come together to build out frameworks or, you know, principles and therefore implementation of it? Is it going to lead to a more, you know, uniform or more synergies, you know, in terms of the black and white, the details? That's why as a company, I would be interested.
Yeah, absolutely. So the short answer is yes. Well, one of the sort of, if all countries have to agree, yes. If consensus-based organization, when we establish what the, we establish what the common rules are, they have to be enforceable and they have to, in all of our jurisdictions. So a debris of complication when we want to make any changes, right? You have to make sure all the members agree. But the benefit is, is that you know, the larger the market, the more difficult the conversations are, the more valued that that certification has because it then reflects commonalities among all the markets. We have nine, I'll say a half now, the UK's an associate member. But that's an important, that is the driving motivation for the creation of the system to begin with, is that we want to create that for companies, one entry point that then gets you how many markets, however many governments, however many countries that we can include. And we hear that from our companies. Every company that operates in multiple markets has to meet those requirements. And every difference is an additional, is an inefficiency. And to the extent that, like, let's be real, we're dealing with a lot of the same things. They just might be set differently or there might be small or might not be understood. We think there's quite a large basis to establish commonality around. You have to, you know, give consumers a choice. You have to do things based on consent. In our engagements, we see a large, there's a lot of commonality. There's still differences, which is why we have to coordinate and we have to, we have that conversation.
But just to add, standard making process, this is different. Standard making, you organize all the countries together, you define the standard that one, like, little standard applied all across the country. This is different than a standard making process basically. So take a mapping exercise you do and see some of the high-level principle, how you are imposing and allowing that for certification process basically. So this is different than a standard making.
Yeah, that's important. I thank you for clarifying that because we're not establishing new standards. We're basically reflecting commonalities in our laws. That's, so thank you.
We'll come to here.
Just for an extension, hi, this is Mohit. I represent Tata Guns Services. One of the answers you already gave was uniform department, right? However, as I heard you say that it does not override the law of the land. Is that correct, right?
That's right.
How do we sink in? I mean, I understood from the, I also, there is commonality that we're trying to bring in from different laws. But again, there are differences that exist. So how would this sink in when it comes to a common platform and bringing in the trade to be in a normal manner when it comes to CDRs?
Well, I, so we do this and to go back to again, the sort of mapping exercise is that we all, we establish what's common among all of us. And then we try to capture the largest space of commonality that we can recognize. And we're not going to get everything. But what's sort of, and to the benefit, we think we're trying to do this for companies, even if it's not 100%, if it's 80%, if it's 75%, if it's 90%. In different markets, it will be different. But even having that sort of commonality across the board, even less than 100%, is what we try to go for. And that's, so again, coming together and saying, this is what we do here. What do you do there? Where's the commonality? And then let's all build around that.
So the assessment which happens in a country, around the country's own requirement, right? And so if there is a difference, you achieve 80% commonity, 20%, it's a gap, right? So then there will dispute happen under 20%. So how do, is there a way to do some kind of interpretation on that?
Well, so one thing I'll say on sort of broadening the scope of a certification is that we are currently undergoing a review of the CDR requirements to see how we can lessen that gap. Because the CDR requirements were established about 10 years ago. And laws have evolved since then. And there are things that are reflected in the requirement. And there are things that aren't reflected in the requirement. For example, one of the things we talked about in San Diego was data breach, privacy impact assessment. So we are starting the discussion to see how we can add program requirements that reflect current best practices. So for example, I think, and it's, again, sort of why we are engaging to get more countries involved, is that there have been a lot of developments and where we would benefit from bringing in countries that have new laws, current laws, to expand that. I, I'm not sure, and I don't know that it's realistic to, excuse me, expect that we'll ever have 100% overlap with every jurisdiction. I mean, between us, it's different. Even in the U.S., we have differences on certain things, but then among our states. So to be real, I think that's not, but I think that is not even necessary. There are ways there to expand and enhance the value of this multilateral certification while maintaining the differences. And I think for governments, it's important to be able to have that space, that flexibility to have things that, even if they're different, that are important to you for your legal framework. That's how I'd say that.
So can you give it to Larit?
An extension to that question, actually.
Can it be brief, thank you?
Yeah, yeah, very helpful. So we understand international trade, and then at a country level, we will define the common, the commonality, we will need the commonality. How would it flow down to a sector level with this specific country? Because international trade is not a strand across various sectors.
So can it be a sector level?
It can. There's no inherent prohibition on having a sector, like, if there's a sector-specific law, for example, that, there's no inherent, it's entirely flexible. It's up to the government to determine how they want to apply or implement or participate in the scheme.
So Larit and then Ashish, and then I'll come to Kartik.
Thank you, Vinay. So I'm Lalit Khanna. I represent Ernst &amp; Young, I have a partner with the firm. So partially, Mohit has asked my question. The question was essentially on the regulatory aspects. So every country has different regulators governing different sectors. Now, what I understand from the conversation is mapping different laws, essentially creating a unified framework, which gets implemented by companies and then they get certified. How, do you have a roadmap where you consider specific regulatory or the delta regulatory, so for example, requirements coming from a HIPAA or HIDRIS or the Visa Bank of India requirements, how do you plan to handle those?
So that's an interesting question, I think, in particular for the U.S. because we have sector-specific regulations and different regulators. And so the short answer is, there's flexibility. And for us, we're currently considering how to bring in, if and how, I should say, to bring in sector-specific regulators and those industry lines as well. I will say, it, in some ways, can, is a degree more complicated, but it's, there's, the thing about the CEPR system, which is, I think, user-friendly and which makes it flexible, is that the CEPR system is fixed. Other things, sectors or, or different laws, different approaches can meet that fixed thing, as long as the requirements are there, there's no prohibition. We can certainly do that. Now, in the U.S., we're still sort of having these conversations. We have broadly, the Federal Trade Commission has jurisdiction over a large part of commercial activity in the U.S. Like, there are financial services, there are sort of some, some aspects of health, data services that aren't covered there, that we are looking at getting in the program. Again, there's nothing inherently prohibitive of doing that. It just has, you have to bring the right people to the table to have those conversations.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I'll come to you. Kartik, Sarman, and they'll come to Puniya.
Thanks, I'm Ashish Aravarti from Masco. So I know maybe it's still early days, but just in terms of the enforcement cooperation, and are there some real-world experiences which already suggest protecting or not it is? Are there challenges or in terms of expectation setting, is there something that we can take over?
Yeah, so that's a great question. Actually, we do have real-world experience because the global system is based on APEC. APEC has these existing structures. So we have a enforcement cooperation agreement with an APEC, and regulators have examples, I don't have them off the top of my head, sorry, but they do present and talk about cases where they have cooperated to, on certain enforcement matters, which are now public and they can talk about. So I would say from a regulator's standpoint, what we hear from them is, it's almost unheard of that you wouldn't have a, an investigation or a case that didn't cross borders in some way, shape, or form. Having a mechanism to be able to reach out to your counterpart in the jurisdictions where these things arise is invaluable, and regulators want that, that gives them an extra tool. So there are, there's precedent, and we think that in fact, this, the global foreign enforcement cooperation can be expanded even, obviously, it's going to be.
Just addition on top of things. So one part, most of the Jaur of including the DPTP Act created extra test, uh, mandatory requirement for the enforcement. But the enforcer in the country should also legally be empowered to do the enforcement for the request that come from other Jaur, right? That must be sound the requirement.
So I want to be clear at the outset, there's nothing about the forum that gives additional authorities or takes away authorities. An enforcement authority has the authorities it has under your own law, endpoint. So it's not giving you anything extra. What it does is it gives you cooperation with authorities in other jurisdictions that may be able to reach things that you can't, reach companies, reach information, share resources, that was another thing that we talked about in San Diego, regulators, that sometimes these tools have been used to, if I can say it, casually divide and conquer an investigation that can be complicated, there are different acts, we have similar things, you know, you're doing this aspect, you're doing that, you kind of compare numbers. And so there's a number of benefits, but it's not, it doesn't impact, your authority is what it is. It's not, it's, it's more empowering you with tools and relationships.
So what could be the enforcement action? Is the withdrawal of the certification could be the?
Yeah. So there are sort of multiple layers of enforcement. First line, you have, so it's a certification that is issued by a third party, an independent third party, and in the system, they're called accountability agents. And those are independent, and they work with companies to make sure that they meet all the requirements before issuing the certification, they monitor, they handle dispute resolution. At that level, if a company is not following its obligations, then the accountability agent can kick them out, revoke the certification, they can refer them to, in certain circumstances, the enforcement authority. So there's a degree of enforcement that accountability agents can do. The regulator itself, they always have jurisdiction. In fact, they have jurisdiction, you have jurisdiction under your own law. So the CEPR certification is a tool, it adds an extra layer of accountability, it can surface issues, et cetera, but the regulator always has jurisdiction over what the law provides. So that's always there, that you have this additional layer of accountability, oversight, monitoring, et cetera.
So I'm going to Kartik, but people on the line, please raise your hand if you want to ask questions, we'll come to you as well on the virtual call. Yes? So I, after you, I'll go to Puniya, and then we'll come to you.
Hi, good evening, this is Kartike Raman. I am a partner with Masara's and data privacy and protection there. So I have worked with a couple of companies with, where we were doing CEPR in APEC. So in one of the things that I wanted to ask you is, when it comes to, for example, our DPTP, there are certain clauses which are completely different from what other regulations that have been mapped to APEC under CEPR is. So in such cases, where do we stand? What kind of assessment you will do? Only after, when it is applied by the government or even before that?
So I have worked, I haven't done the assessment of the Indian law to the CEPR requirement, so I can't say sort of what the differences are or if there are differences, or, I mean, I haven't read the law, there are a lot of commonalities, it suggests that, but there is a process through which, to return to Vinay's point before, there's a mapping process where you would have to align the requirements with some law in India that would make that requirement enforceable. I should say, not to overly complicate things, but I mentioned the U.S. example, we don't have a comprehensive privacy law, so we rely on a consumer protection authority. There is no prohibition on using whatever legal authority that, so if you have a consumer protection law that, or something like that, not, again, I don't mean to complicate, just to say that there are a lot of flexibility. It's just the process of showing how all, I mean, the big program requirements have to be enforceable, endpoint. How that happens is entirely up to the country that wants to participate, demonstrating to the other members that, hey, this is meaningful, as meaningful in my country as it is in your country, and let's proceed. It's not sort of prescriptive on the health that's.
Even when you don't have a particular principle, for example, choice is not there. So that principle itself is not there.
Yeah, but there is choice. There's a specific purpose written, so there is suddenly, I mean, it's not written as choice, there is word of those specific purpose, right? And you have to take consent only for specific person, the choice is already there. It's there, actually.
So that's interesting. I think you raised a really interesting point, is that it may be on the surface, and I encountered this a lot when engaging with other governments.
Someone.
On privacy requirements. What you've realized in the discussion is, maybe we don't say it the same way, but it is the same thing. And that is what these government-to-government, regulator-to-regulator conversations are so important, because through those discussions, you create a bridge, you say, I understand when you say this being the same thing as when you say this. We have this conversation over and over, so I appreciate that point.
Yeah, hi, this is Salman Wari, so I'm a tech and policy lawyer here in India. So my question is actually immunity for what was discussed earlier. While I understand that the CEPR focuses on commonalities, and even if there are no commonalities, there is no restrictions. I mean, so there is, you know, opportunity to focus and get things implemented through a common objective. But where there are, you know, provisions under the law, which is completely just opposed to the principles of CEPR. For example, in India, there are very strong requirements for data localization, which I, I mean, in my opinion, would be kind of just opposed to CEPR principles. So how would you reconcile that, and is that something that is being considered? Thank you.
Yeah, so again, to emphasize that, there's nothing in the CEPR system that overrides domestic requirements. If there is a sector-specific data localization requirement, that still applies, unless the government decides to say, for example, recognize, if you're certified, then the data localization requirement is lifted. It's up to the government to recognize under its own law how, what the benefits are. Domestic law always, always applies. So I think, you know, one of the benefits, from a government perspective and from a trade perspective, which is the perspective that I come from, we try to demonstrate, one, that privacy doesn't need to be a reason to localize data, because we can build a system of accountability, of understood and common standards, high standards or internationally recognized, et cetera. I mean, again, you know, if governments have reasons for making certain policies, but you know, we try to create a system where you don't, to avoid the need for data localization on the basis of that, at the very least. But if there are restrictions, whatever they are, still apply.
Yeah. Puriya, first, and then you also can come.
Hi, I'm Kesh, Puniya, representing Jack by India. So my question is about that, we are generally the IT organizations working the most of the time to the US, United States. So when this global CEPR framework, if it's between two countries, they are seven hundred and a half. So if, from the industry perspective, we have to use this and we have to sell this within the, so what is the adaptation or recognition within the U.S. industry? Because at the end of the day, those requirements generally, all of from the industry will be overlooked.
So question is that somebody, like one company, a data certification, so what kind of recognition you get in those Jaur?
What the benefit?
What are the benefits? What?
Or, or my question is that, like for example, generally, the industry in aspect is, or the industry, as we say that we are sub to type two with the privacy, or there is so many standards, or industry, whether, even the government organization, they are also in the United States supporting going on. So therefore, what is the adaptability of this standard within the U.S.?
There's competition out there, what you're saying, and they want wide CEPRs. So first of all, APEC CEPRs is operational now, and we have 70-plus companies that are participating, it's in APEC, and the global forum is imminently going to establish the global certification system and then transition those companies that are participating. So we have companies that are already participating in the system, and I can tell you some real world examples of the benefits and why they participate. There's sort of the hard regulatory benefits. I mentioned already that we have a couple of members, Singapore and Japan notably, that have recognized under their law that they, that CEPR permits valid transfers. There's the soft regulatory benefits, and you hear from regulators, including the U.S. Federal Trade Commission, that even though we don't have a prohibition on transfers or anything like that, in the event of an incident and an investigation, they view this as a best practice of demonstrated good faith, required efforts to meet privacy standards, and that can, I think, is a good reflection on companies that they're trying to meet best practices and that can mitigate any kind of enforcement action. Also, companies talk about the fact that nine governments have agreed, come together and agreed, these are the privacy standards, and creates a comfort for CEOs and others in companies that I'm doing what, the United States supports this, Japan supports this, Korea supports this. I can tell you that we, one of our initiatives to promote the forum is also to get broader recognition by regulators, the hard, hard regulatory benefits that you pointed to. But the soft ones are there now, and, you know, sort of finally, I will say, one other thing that we hear increasingly from our companies is that due diligence requirement when dealing with transfers, that having a third-party verification that the third-party, or sorry, that the sort of counterpart when you're exchanging data with has met and demonstrated best practices is invaluable. So, you know, multiple of our companies that are in the CEPR system are multinationals. They have hundreds, sometimes thousands of vendors that they have to do due diligence on before they can share data with. Having a system that they can point to, oh, that, that's a trusted company, I don't have to do due diligence on you because it's already been done. So again, sort of. So again, sort of, sort of reciting some of the benefits we hear from our companies that are already participating.
So this harm and?
Well, I have another small question. Any plant in the EU or the EU?
Okay, very good question. So we're very, I know this is not a EU country, but we're very pleased to have the UK participating in. And of course, you know that, or you may know that their GDPR, they have a UK GDPR is the same as what's in there. And we have done a lot of work with them to assess the requirements there and there's a significant overlap. So I think on the substance, there's a lot of potential for interoperability. And I should say, and Benayat can talk about, we had a number of discussions at our recent workshop. We had a German DPA came and talked about work in the G7 that they're doing to promote interoperability with CBPRs and EU GDPR. There are a couple of initiatives that we're exploring now to expand the opportunity for interoperability with the EU GDPR. So I guess that's a long-winded way of saying, I think there is a lot of potential and there's interest on our side, I think.
Maybe individual country may become, individual country of European Union may become part of, may not be European Union as of now.
That would be something. It's, it's not impossible. It's, I think, you know, there was a critical role there, there could be. But I, there's some, there's some good conversations going on now that, we'll see. I'm not, I wouldn't say member, but at least establishing a connection and interoperability. And there's sort of some interesting creative ways we're thinking about that.
But the soft and hard regulation part that you talk about and I remember most of those data transfer discussions that happened, soft regulation is always tied with the top line dividend growth you have, right? You're trusted, you will be considered for doing business. But hard regulation is the compliance cost that you have, right? And that's why the benefit of soft regulation is quite significantly higher. Being trusted is that then your, your ability to work with many geographies improves a lot. So Siniya, ask to you.
Yeah, I, I see this as a useful instrument. The industry will, I feel like it, to adopt, given the gap, that lack of harmonization between data protection laws across the country is created. Maybe it will bridge the gap to certain extent and help the industry. I think data privacy laws, although they look pretty much same, they have variations and those variations unfortunately are significant, particularly on the right spot, which is what this whole challenge is about. So will we get harmonization across that? I'm curious to see how it happened. Maybe the countries that adopted, most of them are having good amount of harmonization. And I'm looking forward to whether India will, government side, will it come forward and embrace this? Only then we can comment to the role, right? But having said that, there's also a belief that this doesn't address all the principles which are required or which are reflected in today's data operation laws. For instance, on breach notification, on use of public available data, which is very, very important for us in the AI context, where we are dependent on machine learning, using data from locations which are, we are definitely not sure whether it will be, we can take, you know, give notice or consent, right? Similar to what Article 13 of GDPR requires, we probably can't do that. And that's where this is weak, similarly children's data. So there are a number of requirements that are, there are today's data protection regulations which are dissing from these principles. So there, will, how will we bridge the gap? Will this give us an advantage when we use data across from other jurisdictions is the thought?
Yeah, I mean, so I mentioned earlier that we're reviewing the current program requirements. So agree that there are some gaps and we're looking to see what we can build. Now, gaps cannot be filled if only, anything short of all the members can enforce it. So to be clear, I said before, I think there will always be some differences, but they will be incremental, right? But I do think data breach is one that, that we've already started talking about. So we are looking to enhance that. And I would say that the differences are, there are differences there, but they're not as great as I think some say they are. I think one point of comparison for, from the US perspective is we have a parallel program with the EU, the data privacy framework that facilitates transatlantic data flows, that is in compliance with GDPR. And we have compared the DPF requirements with the CBPR requirements. Now, DPF, because of our, the US structure, is enforced on, is a similar type program. It's a self, it's a self-certification program one to privacy requirements that companies voluntarily join. So there's some similarities between the mechanism and how CBPRs work. When it comes to the substantive requirements, companies, there's a substantial overlap. There are some differences there. We don't account for sensitive data in the CBPRs and we don't have children's data. But the vast majority, a company that's in one program would read the requirements of the other and vice versa. The, the differences are incremental. But to your point, we are, we acknowledge that there are some ways that we can enhance the certification and cover more of those things that are present in current laws. And we are starting to do that, having the discussions now.
My name is Jagannath, I'm the DPO of EGM Italy. Nice to hear you out. Well, I'm going to ask a little different question now, now that you said CBPR has to be agreed between the two governments, right? At the end of the day, have you, have there been any instances, right? Where governments are pulled back from these discussions or there have been a challenge for CBPR, for the agreement to happen? That's one point, point number one. And the second point is the data privacy, I mean, the data transfer framework and CBPR. I think one of the key differences is surveillance, right? And the, while the government having access to personal data, that is where Shremz too and literally boiled down, right? So this is a clear difference, whereas CBPR calls out for more, more collaboration in sharing data when a government is asking you to share data, whereas it's the other way around there.
Yeah, okay. On the second point, thank you for flagging that CBPRs is only commercial requirements. So that is an important decision. One thing I will say is that the conversation around government access to data surveillance and data privacy continues to evolve. I think Shremz one introduced that, you know, Europe introduced that into the global consciousness and that, since that time, the conversation has evolved, not only among governments, but also internally. Governments are identifying and taking action about their own concerns about government. It's not just Europe concerned about that anymore. So why do I say that? Because this, the forum members are currently at least discussing amongst ourselves how we should consider these issues in the context of the forum. As it currently is, we, it's only on the commercial aspects, but the conversation is happening as it's happening, involving everywhere. You may be aware of the conversations in the OECD around trusted government access principles. That was a huge unprecedented effort for governments to come together to agree on common practices on government access. And that's just recent, that was just issued and agreed last year. So that's a conversation that's evolving and we're having that. We're also trying to figure out sort of what is the best approach for this, you know, historically commercial agreement to tackle those issues if we tackle them.
But the problem with Shremz two, there isn't any technical solution available which, which can really solve the problem that Shremz two has raised, right? So it has to be government-to-government level agreement, only that will be solving the problem. So we are now looking at some of the problems that European company has to work in India because of Shremz two, because some assessments started happening on that. So I think some, especially the government access to data is now really coming to hit on the data flows and especially the relations, commercial relations that may happen between the countries.
No, absolutely. I mean, that was the whole impetus for coming up with the data privacy framework is to solve that question with respect to Europe.
What my first question?
The first question? The short answer is no, we haven't faced that yet. The program within APEC, we grew to have nine APEC members join it and that, that was it, nine of the twenty-one. We globalized a year and a half ago and we have one new country join as an associate. We are in discussions, there are other countries that are interested in joining, but we have never faced the issue of what you say that, that somebody is withdrawn or been rejected. I should say, one of the things we did in the global forum to sort of facilitate broader participation by governments is create a sort of first tier of, so there's full membership and then there's associate membership. So a government can join the conversation without fully buying into the CBPR system. As long as you have a law and you're a regulator, you can join the conversation. You can participate in CBPR activities. You start the consultations with the other members to, then it's a pathway to membership. But, so there's sort of a tiered approach to sort of initiate consultations. So we're hoping that that can bring on governments maybe that are still considering or want to see how we align, that, that sort of thing. So anyway, short answer is we haven't had that.
You mentioned associate, UK joined as an associate member, right?
So is there, what is different between?
Yeah, so if you're an associate, you don't have voting rights and, and also can actually participate in the CBPR certification. That, participating in the certification, which means you can make that available to your companies, a government has to be a full member because then you have to set up the?
Any non-APEC country can become full member.
Yeah, global, global forum is open. There are no restrictions at all, like you don't have to be a member of another organization, there are no geographic. That's why we created the global forum was to allow the APEC CBPR system to be globalized. We wanted to make this tool more broadly available. So the associate membership can participate in forum activities and discussions, but there aren't voting rights and you don't actually issue the certifications to it.
This can simply pass, right, to Ramah?
I just want to highlight some issues on accountability agent and the certification processes. First of all, India needs to become a member. That's the first source offer. In nineteen ninety-one, we did apply and we were refused because some of the members perceived protectionist measures. So we need to see, even if we cross that with source offer, I think the number of accountability agents who certify companies are still very limited. In the, in the beginning, they were just there. In the US, at least now, I think Singapore, Korea and Japan have an accountability agent. But then, then our companies, unique companies, you know, decide to certify themselves. The certification also is for a specific process. It's not a company-level certification. The process could be, you know, for collecting employee or prospective employee data. If the company is having, let's say, any learning portfolio, it could be for training and prospecting. So the, first of all, the company level, then all the affiliates and substitutes of the company and the number of processes to be power to get certified by this accountability agent. Unless we look at how does this ecosystem grow or is more simplified, where at a company level, there is a certification and there are more accountability agents in this region. Because even while there is one in Singapore, I think only one of the companies so far have used that, their services. We need to solve all of this problem if we need this APEC CBPR. Otherwise, at the fundamental level, this CBPR system offers a lot of harmonization of the business.
So agreed, I will say that the, we're encouraging broader company uptake. I think what we, the CBPR system was established in twenty-eleven. The situation around the global regulatory environment has changed dramatically. So in fact, we're seeing a lot more interest now in this program than we have traditionally. And the expectation that we hear from companies is once you set up the global, when we're certifying, we want to be the first, we're day one. So I think, agree that company uptake has been slow. But from what you're hearing from our companies or business stakeholders is that this points to change. So that's good. And again, also, I think the more countries we include on this mechanism, the more valuable, et cetera. On the actual certification process, just one minor clarification, which is a CBPR certification can be enterprise-wide. It is, thus not actually the sort of limiting to processes is a GDPR limitation, C. So GDPR recognizes certifications where they have that sort of limitation and, you know, processing or sort of business lines. And that would actually, I would say, is a comparison where CBPRs is more valuable and useful for companies because we don't have that. In fact, many of the companies that are currently in the program have certified their global enterprise-wide operations and it doesn't have to be self.
So the privacy certification always been two level. One is the enterprise-level certification and other is the exit instrument by which you collect the data, whether it be website or application or any such. Largely people are talking in terms of seal, in that case basically. You can seal to application or you can seal. So you are saying that CBR is largely the enterprise privacy program assessment certification?
I mean, a company can certify whatever scope of their operations they want, all the way up to including their enterprise or any, that's up to the company, how much it wants, but it can cover.
So one more question which Ramah asked, right? So there are some assessment ecosystem is being created in India, but the assay is building one privacy seal program basically. So would the, would that be a challenge where you need to be only assessed by that one attribute agent that you have notified? So how is that?
So you raise a really interesting question about the interaction between domestic certifications and say the international certification. So again, it's sort of, at least based on what has been done so far, it's up to the country where this, a domestic certification exists to decide how and whether to integrate those systems. So Singapore is an example where they created a fully integrated domestic certification with the CBPR certification. What does that mean? That means a company goes in through one process and comes out with the benefits of having the domestic and the CBPR system. Japan is a different situation. They have a longstanding PMARK domestic certification program, which is aligned with the CBPR system, but they are in practice currently separate. So a company has to go through two different procedures. And we're talking with Japan to see how, because of, in fact, the overlap, it makes sense to integrate them, but that's obviously up to Japan. But the point is, is that we think that there is, and we've talked about this in the forum, sort of benefit to integrating a domestic certification system to the CBPR system. And there's no inherent restriction on doing that. I think the more you can create, sort of build on commonalities and, and create the sort of synergies, you go through one point and you can come out with that, the better. And on, I think you asked also about accountability agents. I should say that, again, maximum flexibility for governments to implement the certification bodies however they want. In the US, we take a market approach. We have four different accountability agents. They're non-government entities and they compete for providing certifications. In Singapore, they have one that's run by the government and other countries do different, have different things. There's, there's no restrictions. As long as the certification body meets the requirements that we all agreed on, then you can have many, you can have one, it can be integrated with a domestic program, then you can have many, you can have one, it can be integrated with a domestic program, it could be standalone. There's really no requirements on how any country deals with that.
So let me ask you a question on the trade. Most of the trade negotiation, I think, sometimes commitment to data to bin salt, right? And country do have challenge or sometimes any, or do commitment to data, obviously. So as a part of the CDPR, does contest commit, your trade commitment, is it, is it equating to giving trade commitment that you, they will be not restricting the raw data?
So the CDPR forum is not in and of itself a trade commission, commitment. In fact, it's a voluntary cooperation tool. What governments that want to join the forum have to do, they have to agree to the objectives of the forum in addition to some other things. But the objectives of the forum include a commitment to cross-border data flows. So if a government does not share those objectives, does not promote cross-border data flows, then they would not meet the requirements of being a member of the forum. But the trade commitments are separately in a free trade agreement or WTO or something like that, where you could use the CDPR forum as a tool for establishing agreement around. But that's where the binding trade commitment would come, not the forum itself.
Okay, any other question? What do we tie to, until most of the elements of the middle CDPR forum? Anybody online, any question, any message?
So the question is, is there any, whether there are any quantitative estimates on cost reduction benefits that companies, which are already part of the forum, have reported? Whether any such assessments has been done or there are any plans to do this?
Yeah, this is very important to create a business case, right? So is there some analysis has been done?
So we don't have that data currently, not, not beyond an anecdotal basis. But we are discussing with the members on how we can better collect that data and make that case. We do regularly have companies that are certified participate in our discussions and talk about the benefits and et cetera. But again, that's sort of an anecdotal basis here. So I don't have that to provide now, but we are looking at how to, to make that.
Send you the last question, yeah, Safa.
Hi, I'm Rahul. I work for ISO. I'm a cybersecurity consultant. Are there any examples of any violations of the law, any, sorry, not law, the CDPR?
So how violations happen?
And you know, different jurisdictions might create a same, similar violation in a different manner. Let's say, a regulation in one country could be, you know, just in your file, you know, other countries see that a very high part of the issue.
So I can speak for the US. We have had a few enforcement actions that the FTC has taken against companies for falsely claiming to be CDPR certified. I'm not aware of the FTC taking any actions about a violation of the CDPR, but they are certified or has been a violation. And I will say, so part of the requirements for an accountability agent to serve that role is they have to issue reports on complaints that they've received about certified companies, et cetera. So there have been a few complaints here and there that, that the accountability agents have handled through the dispute resolution mechanism. But there haven't been many and that's probably more a result of there've only been like 70 companies are certified and there hasn't, haven't been a lot of complaints or, or enforcement actions.
And we did discuss about the level of enforcement, right? Including withdrawal of certification or those kind of enforcement actions can happen. So I think we have Deepak online and, yeah, Deepak. Not even here.
Oh, we can't hear you just yet.
Yeah, is it connected now?
Yes.